They've been burning out on Padwalk et Dolce, which is a tributary to Redding Creek. And they've been doing a great job out there. They piled a whole lot of slash, mostly under oak woodland and some under conifer forest. And they've been burning the last month or so.
Okay. Thank you, Kenneth. So Joe, joint chiefsy kind of update from Shasta Trinity? Anything?
Joe, are you on mute?
Joe, we're not hearing you. You might be on mute.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I was indeed on mute. So, yeah, I hope to be better at this.
That's the other half of the advisory is to get off mute when you're ready to talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm always telling people to get off mute. What happens here, I'm doing it. So, sorry about that. Bad, my bad, my bad. So, yeah, I think going into this, that we get better at this technology thing. In the Forest Service, we're trying to do better as well. And, you know, we're having issues as far as connectivity and then bandwidth issues at home and whatnot. So, anyway, with that, I'm not going to go into too much details very often. Going into Joint Chiefs fiscal year 2020, we've got $535,000 of Joint Chiefs funding. With that money, we have 746 acres that are planned for accomplishment this year. And that will take in Tip Furs over in Wildwood, the Dubicella project, and our Weaverville Community Forest Fuels and Recreation Project. So, out of that money, $86,000, you should know, is going to archaeology and fisheries work for our C categories. When I give my report for the WCF project, I'll explain a little more detail what the archaeology issues are out there. We're making headway. But, anyway, the implementation, you know, it's going to be the usual mastication, prescribed burning, a little bit of thinning and pruning, and of course, some piling. And now, there is a prescribed burn ban. Some of you know that, some of you may not know that. But because of the circumstances we find ourselves in, we are not to ignite. But we did have some fairly successful burns early on, you know, during the winter. So, end of report.
Okay, great. So Nancy and Krista, how about Six Rivers for Joint Chiefs?
Okay, Joint Chiefs Fuel Grant Total $473,000 received. Free return $23,000. It's allotted towards the fuels. Of that, we put $100,000 in agreement with the 20,000 with water to continue with fuel break construction in the first 48 acres. And again, the usual mastication, chipping, water shafts, not smog. We have the $15,000. $15,000 is roads money. And now, we're in the the RCD, uh, who roads on roads identified with WCD. So, that would be mainly identified
Pretty much can't hear Nancy.
Everybody copy?
Sorry Nancy, we're not making out what you're... There's a lot of distortion and cutting in and out.
Sounds like we're talking to the moon.
Okay. How does everybody... How does everybody copy now?
That's better.
Better.
Okay, so, long and short, we plan on doing 250 to 350 acres of fuel break construction and 20 miles or more of roads identified during the Community Wildfire Protection Plan update. Thus far, with our new dump truck, we've loaded about, this year, since January, almost 200 quarts of firewood into our public firewood gathering site, utilizing the Joint Chiefs funds to support our operator. And that's it. Just to reiterate, the Trinity County RCD for the fuels work is receiving $125,000. The Watershed Center for Fuel Break Construction is receiving $120,000.
Okay, great. Krista, yeah. Okay, anything else? Any questions of Joe and/or Nancy?
This is Jerry, and I just have a general question to give to you bottom up. Are archaeological reports available to the public to FOIA? I'm sorry?
That'd be a question for Joe?
Yeah, I've got it. Uh, muted again. Jerry, that would be a question from Matt Mecia. That's a good question. I think that information is restricted. But Matt Mecia, our forest archaeologist, was better equipped to field that. If you...
So Joe...
I can give you that information as contact information if I like.
Okay, be great.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Joe and Nancy?
Well, this is Joseph. I don't really have a question for them, but concerning Six Rivers' implementation of first 48, when we had our field trip, it seemed to me like we have not addressed some real needs in terms of implementation. So, the next time we have a meeting, I wonder if we could have that as a discussion item on the agenda and talk over how we can get these projects implemented quicker and completed with the cleanup and all quicker. So, if that could go on the agenda for next time.
Okay, I'm just writing that down, Joseph. Thank you. Okay. And welcome to the call, Joseph. Is Susan on the call also?
Yeah, we have a lot of folk getting on.
Yeah.
We're all full, it kept saying. This is Susan.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, other kinds of forestry projects, is there anybody on the... Well, I guess first on Joint Chiefs, did Nick and Kelly have anything to add?
Uh, this is Nick. Not a project update so much as just, you know, NRCS current situation there. You know, Jenna, our current, or prior, I guess now, NRCS District Manager took another job in Tama County. So Jenna's no longer... So the District Manager position is empty. So they're currently advertising actually and looking at applications for the District Manager position and Forester position. So pretty short-staffed at NRCS right now. So I don't know what that means exactly for their ability to deploy Joint Chiefs funding, broader kind of equip cost share funding, or the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, sort of special woodland oriented NRCS funding. It'll depend a lot on whether they're able to fill those positions quickly.
Good morning, everybody. If I may just join in, this is Erin Taylor. I'm just now joining the call. But I will be the acting District Conservationist until the Weaverville NRCS position gets filled. And so I just wanted to quickly introduce myself to everyone. So my tentative start date was supposed to be on the 30th here in the past days. But as things have been rapidly evolving and we've been just receiving all sorts of guidance as far as how we will be operating, so I can relay that information now? Or I can just wait till it's our turn on the agenda? However, you'd like for me to announce that?
Oh, why don't you... You're up.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, that would be the next thing up. So go for it, Erin.
Okay. So, well, good morning, everybody. My name's Erin Taylor. I currently work for NRCS in the Humboldt County office. So I've been in the Eureka office since 2012. And I'm currently the Soil Conservationist there. So I will be acting as the District Conservationist there in Trinity County. And so it will be in day detail or until... And so as of 10 o'clock this morning, that's why I'm late. I apologize. So we receive guidance now that we are all on lockdown throughout the entire state. This means that all NRCS field offices will be will be only available by appointment over the phone to conduct business. So we will actually have the doors to the offices physically locked there in Weaverville. And so we will... It'll just mostly be... We're working remotely as I'm doing right now. And I could give you my contact information. So my email address is erin.s.taylor@usda.gov. So I could be contacted by email. And then my work phone number is 707-832-5597.
Say that again? Thank you. And Erin, maybe you could just send Kelly Sheen your contact information, and he can put that out in an email to everybody, too.
Perfect. And is that also a good... Kelly, are you a good contact, too? Also, email our application ranking dates that we have available and set for California?
Yes, please.
Okay, will do.
Okay. Well, welcome to Trinity County, kind of.
Thank you.
So do you have anything else to add at the moment?
Um, no, but if I could just add that if anybody has any particular information that they were hoping to obtain, just email me, and I could just relay the information that way. I'm not sure how the group typically operates. But I'm just, yeah, just now, you know, diving my toes in the waters, so to speak. So I do not have any particular information at the time, but I will quickly and get whatever I can to you guys. So thanks for having me on the call today. And yes, please feel free to reach out with any questions.
Cool, great, thank you. Any questions for Erin? If none, is there anything new from the Fuel Break Work Group?
Well, we've not had any meetings.
Okay. That kind of... Okay.
Well, you know, we have a field trip to report on. I think that would fit into the discussion about project implementation at our next meeting.
From the field trip we took last fall?
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we discovered on that field trip a number of shortcomings in our program that we need to find some answers to.
Okay. Okay, anything else from anyone on the Fuel Break Work Group? If not, how about non-Joint Chiefs, not the Weaverville Community Forest, project Shasta Trinity updates? Any other... What other forestry-related things are there there? Because that turns to you again, Joe.
Yeah. Chris Losi, our acting District Ranger, will not be able to make it. I just got a text from him about a half hour ago. With everything that's going on today, it's kind of crazy. So he begs your pardon for not being here.
And so that... For people who don't know him, that's Chris Losi?
Losi, O-S-I. He's our new acting District Ranger for the South Fork Management Unit. He comes from the Supervisor's Office on the Shasta Trinity. He is the Forest Environmental Coordinator. He is our go-to person for NEPA, NEPA issues. So anyway, it's 120-day detail. Been here for about, got three months to go.
Okay. So do you have any... Yeah, other projects to update us on?
I'll wait. I think what I'll do is wait. You queue me in to the WCF Fuels and Recreation Project. So I'll go with the other projects, if that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, everything except the Community Forest one.
Yeah, you got it, you got it, yeah. Okay, so I want everybody to know that since Tom Hall has been gone, glad to see him go, happy for him. He went to the Washington DC office at Legislative Affairs, and I think he's going to find that he will be a good fit for that. So what we have here, we looked at Pilot and Dubicella Phase... Dubicella Phase Two was split from the larger Dubicella project. So we got a decision on Dubicella, if you will, Phase One. That's been signed. But the Pilot and Dubicella Phase Two, we took a look at it, and there needs to be a concerted effort on the west side, all hands on deck, to get this project, these two projects going. Pilot being number one, Dubicella Phase Two being number two, and of course, the WCF, Weaverville Community Forest Fuels and Recreation Project being number three. But we felt as though that there's a lot of tension, attention that needs to be made. We are not going to have any semblance of a timeline unless we make this concerted effort, a renewed effort, if you will, in getting these two projects online, getting them back on track. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're taking extra efforts. Some of my specialists, I'm diverting towards the Pilot project currently to making sure we get this project through. So I am starting to engage in this project as well, just to be sure that it stays on track. Chris is the line officer lead, and I think we're making some good progress. A lot of loose ends that we're having to take care of. As far as the Trinity River Management Unit here, where the Trinity Fire Salvage and the Divide Fire Salvage Timber Sale and the Onion Fire Salvage Timber Sale, this is all part of the Car Delta, they are still logging on those projects. The production isn't great. I would say they've got 85, 90% of the logs out of those projects. But amazingly enough, there was some really good volume that was recovered. If you remember, that was about 8.5 million board feet that we sold. I don't have a determination if there's an overrun on that, but I would not be surprised. I do need to report that the Shell Fire Salvage offering, we received no bids twice. So we will not be re-offering that. We did try to repackage into some units that had the higher DBH, the higher log size, pulled the minimum utilization top-down to, I think, 10 inches. But still, we didn't have any offers. So we'll figure out what to do there on that part of the landscape. The Trinity Alps Prescribed Fire Project. I've mentioned this project many times in the past. It's an 18,000-acre... It's a fuels project on the west side of the Trinity Alps. We do have a draft EA out, and so we have had plenty of comments. But we had a little delay regarding archaeological sites. There were some sites out there that were not part of the record, the project record. And so there was some concern by some of the community members who knew of those sites but was not part of the project record. So we did a query, and sure enough, we found out that there were some sites out there that should have been part of the project record that were not. So as a result, we went out to the Alps, and I think we got about three quarters, were able to survey three quarters of the sites. We still have about a quarter of them to go. They are scattered in nature. It's going to require several pack trips out there. They're in the middle of Meagram Ridge. And so that is one of the priorities. Right now, of course, the access isn't there, but we hope to have access more like the end of May, maybe in June, depending on what the weather systems in March and April look like. So that is a priority. We hope to have the archaeological reviews complete, hopefully by July sometimes. And then we'll finish responding to comments. And hopefully, maybe, we'll have a decision at the end of the year. No promises on when that would be, whether it's October or November. We hope it'll be during that time, but we'll see how the surveys go. The other projects that we have, we have a Cooperative Fuel Break project that we're working on in the Bowerment area. It's a 1,700-acre project. It has the usual fuels projects of hand pile, broadcast burn, understory burn, pile burning. And so we're really looking at roadside and ridge tops on this project. About 50% of it is in LSR, late sterile reserves, and the other 50% is in matrix. I would say about 60% of this project also is on the National Recreation Area. Remaining is on the Trinity River Management Unit. So we do... We do have some funding to do third-party NEPA. We're looking at the Watershed Training Center and helping us with that. We're working on an agreement as we speak. We hope to have that completed in the next two weeks or so. But I think that this is one of our engagements with third-party NEPA. We feel pretty confident going forward, but it will be a learning curve for everybody as we start engaging in this. But this project, I should also mention, does have, out of the 1,700 acres, 200 acres of commercial thin. So it's got a little bit of everything. But this is a project that we hope to get started on as soon as we get this agreement, I would say, in a month or so. The Corral Bottom and Burnt Ranch, we've put those projects on hold for the sake of the Pilot project and Dubicella project. And so once we get more traction and get closer to a decision on those two projects, we'll put resources, our human capital, our specialists, back on the Corral Bottom and Burnt Ranch project. I should also say that the Trinity Public Utility District, they are proposing 400 miles of right-of-way expansion. And so we will be engaged with that from a limited standpoint. They have hired Aspen Environmental. It's a very good environmental consultancy. They will be the primary contractor to get the NEPA analysis done on that project. Our involvement will be mostly providing information to the consultancy. So this is kind of a fast-pass project. I hope that... I think we're looking at about a year or so from today's date in getting that decision. So the 400 miles, I think we're looking at somewhere around a 50-foot right-of-way. I think the existing right-of-way is somewhere around 20 feet somewhere. Don't quote me on that, but it's not that wide. I'd also like to report, since the last collaborative meeting we've had, we were very successful in getting a Forest Health, CAL FIRE, Forest Health grant. It's $1.7 million for 3,471 acres on the Shasta Trinity. I think a million dollars, not of the 1.7, but I think the Six Rivers received $1 million as well, roundabout. Anyway, this project is kind of unique because this is primarily for implementation. We're looking at the usual fuel treatments of understory burn, pile burning, mastication, hand thinning, piling. But we also added a little bit of a wrinkle to this by including biomass removal. We think that there is going to be an opportunity for this in other areas, maybe even the Car Delta for those areas that we are not successful selling fire salvage sales. So we think that biomass removal, commercially speaking, is the way to go. I'm convinced of that. So thanks to Kelly and Dylan of the Watershed Training Center for helping us on that. That was a true collaborative effort. And, you know, it's going to bear a lot of fruit. It's going to help get some work done in the ground. That's all I've got.
I wanted to stay real quickly, just as a matter of technical acuity here. The... I've muted everyone that wasn't muted before to reduce the sound of feedback and the glitchiness, which I think is actually helping. So if anybody has something that they're going to chime in about, again, remember to unmute.
I thought you were going to have me repeat all that.
No, I got you, Joe.
Krista and... Krista and... So anybody have any questions for Joe? Anybody? So next up, Six Rivers, Krista and Nancy. So can anybody hear me?
If I've muted anybody, they will need to unmute themselves.
Right.
Because there's some phone numbers that are called in that I don't actually know.
But you can hear me, right?
I'm hearing you now. I unmuted you. Let me get... There's two 707 numbers here that I assume are...
So Krista and... So, yeah.
Hi, hi, everybody. Can y'all hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sweet. So if you guys haven't heard, Kristen Clark is now taking over as our District Ranger. So we're really grateful to have her be promoted up there. So there's that update. She's actually in the other room. If we need to grab her, I can grab her. She's on another call.
That's okay.
Okay. I'll just go into Acre Woods. Quick update on that project. It's just about done. We're just waiting for a signature from Fish and Wildlife on their consultation, and then we could sign the decision memo. So just waiting to wrap that project up and then moving forward with planning on the Robber's Ruth project. And then, other than that, I think that's pretty much all the updates we have at this time.
Okay.
Just for the record, Chris, so you and I've had this conversation, but I want the rest of the folks in the collaborative to be engaged in this. And that is that, yeah, the decision's going to be signed. And I talked with Ted about it, too. We haven't actually gone out and looked at the mark yet. So the Fuel Break Work Group still needs to verify that we're happy with the mark, even though the decision's going to be signed. And that will have to happen at some field trip after the snow melt.
Yep, and I will keep everyone posted on the snow melt and plan a field trip here soon, hopefully.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Anybody else? No? Okay.
I'm just reminding everybody, everybody's on mute pretty much right now, so...
Oh, that's right. So I got a... There's a kind of a delay if somebody wants to get off mute.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody, any other questions for Krista and Nancy? No? Okay. So... So we'll take up RCD Watershed Center. You guys can, Kelly, maybe you, and then Nick.
Very good. So as Nancy mentioned earlier, we're currently building the financial plan for a new project totaling $125,000 for service work, Joint Chiefs money with Six Rivers. It's going to be a modification to existing agreement that we have currently. I'm also building financial plan for an additional $135,000 for the, in the Browns, Phase Three, there were some cable units that were decided weren't going to be part of the harvest area. So that, that area is now going to be treated as a shade of field break. So we're going to be doing that work with the Shasta T, also, I believe, with Joint Chiefs funding. Let's see. I wanted to report out that Joe had mentioned the 1.7 million. That's part of the current CCI grant that Nick will report out on here in a minute. But I wanted to report out that the, on the Forest, sorry, that was the Forest Health side, on the Fire Prevention Ask, which was about a hun, which was about $1 million for this last round of CCI funding, our proposal was not accepted, unfortunately. What else? Our crews, just based on kind of current operational restrictions, based on the current state of the state, we have not, we decided this past week not to bring our crews back on. So unfortunately, we're putting off our field season till preliminary date of April 6th. We're hoping that things sort of settle up by that time, but that's still an unknown. Okay. So I think that's it for me right now.
Okay. Any questions for Kelly? If not, well, wait a minute in case somebody has to figure out the unmuting thing. Okay. Nick, how about you?
Yeah, hey there, everybody. Quick report out on the California Climate Investment, the CCI funding through CAL FIRE's Forest Health Program. We're successful in securing a second round of funding through that program. So just so everyone's tracking, just wrapping up, actually, at the end of March here, the first round of funding through that program that we secured three years ago. So this would be Phase Two of that funding. Secured $3.8 million that will be deployed on public and private land over the next four years through, run through 2024. And so breakdown on that money is 1.7 million going to Shasta Trinity National Forest Projects, little under $1 million going to Six Rivers National Forest Projects, $300,000 going to Sierra Pacific Industries for a fuel break project, $15,000 going to Trinity River Lumber, Crow Creek Timber Company for a fuel break project, $100,000, it's going through the RCD for some private lands, fuels reduction work, and then about $200,000 of prescribed burning on private lands in Hay Fork, Weaver Basin, and Heim Palm area that the Watershed Center will be implementing. Give you a quick rundown on the span of project areas that'll be funded through this, because it's a, you know, it's a fairly complex budget with money going in a bunch of different directions. But I'll just, I'll list off the project areas so folks are kind of, at least roughly familiar with where it's going. On the Trinity River Management Unit, there's going to be some work associated with the Carr Delta, sort of fuels management, TRMU Roads Project, County Road 106, so that's east of the lake. Carr Delta Fire Road Maintenance and Safety Project, which is also to the east of the lake there. On the South Fork Management Unit, got the, there's funding going to the Dubaculla Project area. The 2015 Fire Reforestation Project that is associated with the Sheil Fire, Picket Fire, and Barker Fires on SFMU. Additional 2015 Fire Reforestation on the Johnson Fire Footprint and on the Stafford Fire Reforestation. So number of reforestation projects there. There's funding going into the Middle Hay Fork Pre-Commercial Thinning and Fuels Management to the Kellogg Fuels Reduction Project. That's a fuels maintenance, prescribed fire-oriented. The West Side Plantation Thin Project. The Weaverville Community Forest Fuels Management, that's another prescribed fire-oriented maintenance work. Weaverville Community Forest Plantations Thinning. Lake Forest Fuels Project, which is also prescribed fire. It's up around the lake. The first, okay, so on, so that's the Shasta Trinity Project, Six Rivers. They'll be funding going into the Burst 48 roadside fuel break construction to Kelsey Peak roadside fuel break construction, to Mad River Ridge fuel break maintenance, to the Beaver Slide, so prescribed fire work that'll be going in behind the thinning, the harvest and thinning that went on there. And then Sierra Pacific will be working on Wells Mountain Fuel Break Construction. Trinity River Lumber will be working on a Weaver Creek Watershed Fuel Break on their private lands in that watershed. And then I had mentioned the private land prescribed fire, Heim Palm area, Hay Fork area, Weaver Basin, that the Watershed Center will be implementing. And then finally, the RCD is going to be focused on the Tucker Hill area doing fuels reduction work. So a lot of, lot of money going to a lot of different places around the county over the next few years through that funding. That's really great.
Yeah, cool.
Additional, just real brief, oh, go ahead. Yeah, any questions around that in particular?
Sounds like not.
Hearing none, hearing none. Will be, yeah, great. Meeting adjourned. Okay. Quickly, you know, same situation that, you know, the RCD is experiencing, and no doubt the Forest Service and everybody else as well. We're basically holding on our, on our field crew deployment right now. We've got a whole lot of work, both in fuels management and in planning, working with both the Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity pre-NEPA and layout and marking oriented to help deploy projects. And so all that's on hold. And, you know, if we are able to get up and running, we'll have two, we'll have two six-person fuels crews, one mastication crew, wildlife crew, two silviculture crews, and a fuels technician crew deployed along with the NEPA planning that Joe, that Joe referenced for the Bowerment area. So lots on hold, pretty hopeful that we'll be able to find some ways to deploy with some good protections and mitigations for COVID-19 here. But for the time being, we're holding tight.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Nick.
So any...
Nick, there was a, Carol Fall asked through the chat facility of this interface, is there a description of the projects for the CCI grant anywhere online? Or could you provide an electronic version of, you know, the description of the projects that you just described in more detail?
Yeah, so there's, the grant proposal itself doesn't describe every single project area in detail. I can provide you with the, I can provide you with the sort of, the grant, either the grant agreement or the grant proposal probably even has more detail. And you guys can comb through that. Yeah, I'm comfortable doing that. So it doesn't have, again, sort of that full list of project areas. The most detail you can find about that is really in the budget. Because that shows sort of how many acres of, you know, how many acres of hand thinning, you know, biomass harvest, prescribed fire, for how many dollars associated with each project. So, but you can read the entire kind of narrative component of it, too. Yeah, so I'll try, I'll make that available.
Thanks, Nick.
Yep. So any other questions, comments for Nick? So I need to go back just real quickly and ask Joe to unmute and give us a what's happening with Browns Phase Three, the actual commercial harvest? Is that still online for the spring?
Yes. Can you hear me, Pat, and everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is hypothetically, at least based on COVID-19 stuff.
Okay. Yeah, Browns Phase Three is still on in terms of the contractor, Warner Enterprises. He is still wrapping up over in Ice. He is not complete, but we still hope to have some operations later in the spring. I will keep everybody updated on that because we'd like to have a field trip.
Okay. Cool. And stay unmuted because you're up next on the Weaverville Community Forest Fuels Maintenance and Recreation Project.
Okay. So this is the top priority on my unit, but for the West Side, it is, like I mentioned, it's number three with an all, I would say, a full-court press, even though we're not having March Madness, right? So sad. Full-court press on Pilot and then Dubaculla Phase Two, but especially on Pilot. But going to Weaverville Community Forest Fuels and Recreation Project, last time I reported on this in the collaborative, it was just the WCF or the Weaverville Community Forest Fuels Maintenance Project. So we decided to throw in the trails, the Weaver Basin Trails in this project. The reason why is we have such common use with the locals, but also outside of the area. You know, we have a world-class trail system. So we wanted to be sure that if we're going to do a project encompassing the trail within the Weaver Basin, why not include them in this decision document? We are looking at a categorical exclusion, actually a series of five, category six categorical exclusions. And so it's going to take a little more time, but we thought that this effort is certainly worth it with all the demand that we find ourselves in within the system, the trail system. So going to the trail system, since I'm on that subject, let me, let me talk a little bit about that. We've got about 40 miles of trails, and these folks are world-class trails. Some of them are just exceptional. But we want to expand the trail system. New trails, about 9.8 miles. If you happen to take a look at the scoping letter, you'll be able to see the miles that are allocated with user-created trails, 5.9, and then, of course, the 9.8 that I mentioned. But the new trails, we feel, are really essential because some of those are reroutes. There's some hydrologic issues and soil disturbance issues with some of the trails. And so we feel like it would be better fit to reroute some of the trails. So that requires NEPA process. So there's also trails, if anybody's been out there, they know there's some user-created trails that are not official trails. So if they're not official, it's hard to get funding, almost impossible to get funding to maintain those trails unless you have, you know, your volunteers. They'll do just about anything for you to ask them. But we feel that to get serious funding, we need to have those named as official trails. And so there's about 5.9 miles that were, that are user-created and are existing, but they're not official. So we want to capture those. And then really, the real big upshot of this is we want to allow for authorization of non-motorized recreational events. You know, the usual activities or bike races, a horse race, the cross-country run. And in doing so, we don't want to have to go through a separate NEPA document for each activity. So what this, what this analysis, including these trails in this, in this document, would allow for any proponent to come in and go through their proposal process. And if the project fits, then we would be able to go ahead and document that this fits within the system, it fits within the decision, and proceed with permitting. So this is going to require a little bit of an uplift for us, a little bit of a time extra for survey analysis. But the big thing about this is, is that there's going to be continued uses of the trail system. And so we felt like it was certainly worth it. The fuel side is really what this project started about. We have the usual fuel treatments, a mastication, chipping, pile burning, the jackpot burning, the understory burning. But there was just a hodgepodge of burns that have not been maintained over the last 10 years. Some of these projects that were burned were probably nine, 10 years ago, and some is recent years ago. So really, the emphasis on the fuel side tends to burn. And so we had a compilation of nine separate NEPA decisions. And so we're taking all these areas, the 4,800 acres, and combining them into one decision. So the challenge is right now, just what we were talking about on the Turney Alps Prescribed Fire Project, we are finding the same situation in the Weaver Basin. There are some areas that, that have been looked over. We are not sure what the strategy was, but, you know, we have a great legacy of mining here. I would say at the time, world-class mining right before us, not far from down here. But we're finding that these features were not documented. So it has, it has been a painstaking process to go through these archaeological sites, to get them surveyed. So the surveying is very, very slow right now. And archaeologists don't have an option just to be able to filter everything that is out there. We can determine whether these are eligible for recording or not, but at this point in time, the surveying is where the time is being spent. So with that, we still hope to have a decision by the end of the year. We do have Joint Chiefs money attached to these projects. I would say the emphasis in terms of implementation is the Oregon Hill, Glenison Gap area, which is the far western portion of the project area. We feel like that's the most critical area to treat first. So as soon as this decision is made, I will be the signature as a district ranger on this decision. The first areas we will implement are the far western portions. And so we'll work from the west going east. And I think for the next six, seven years, we're going to be very, very busy on this project. As I mentioned, there's five CE categories in part of this NEPA document. We feel they're a good fit, and we, we hope to have some really good comments, which we have had in the scoping process. And by far, we've received a far majority of favorable comments, just to let you know. So this is a great project. It is my priority over on this side, but as I mentioned, in the larger West Side picture, still the Pilot Project and Dubaculla Project are in front of us. So are there, are there any questions?
Remember, if you have a question, you have to unmute. Remember, if you have a question, you have to unmute. This is hard. Usually when we're in a live meeting, you can see people squirming around wanting to say something. And I gotta kind of.
No language.
Hi, this is John. John, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Joe, I was wondering on the on the treatments, did you guys consider implementing any of the collaborative's fuel break prescription on the treatment areas?
For burning?
Well, the fuel break encompasses burning as well as some thinning, commercial thinning.
There's no commercial thinning on this project.
And so that's my question. But my question is, did you consider it?
We did not. We did not consider commercial thinning on this project.
And why?
We we felt like this is a project that we wanted to implement as soon as possible. And we we also felt that that the areas by far that had been previously treated didn't warrant the thinning that we saw. We could have expanded this project into areas that have not been treated before, but we wanted to focus primarily on those areas that have already been burned, piled burned or understory burned. That was the emphasis of this project. We want to stay true to that.
Any follow-up, John?
No, thank you. That's. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
It's not to say we have other. I just want another comment, Pat. It's not to say that we're we weren't looking for those opportunities. I think there are opportunities in Weaverville Community Forest, certainly. But we felt like let's let's stay so focused on the maintenance portion of these projects, especially this this project as proposed. It would have taken a little more time to analyze. We were hoping to have this done by now, if we first started this. But not knowing the archaeological issues that we found out there, you know, we find ourselves a little bit delayed. But, you know, we wanted to fast-track as much as we could this project into implementation. And so just focusing on those areas that have been burned, have been previously treated, that that was the real onus of this project.
Okay. So this is on our agenda group as a potential action item to have the collaborative make a recommendation to the board of supervisors to send a letter of support for this project to the Forest Service. So leave it up to the group here to decide whether to make a motion and do that or not.
Hey, before we before we go further, I thought Joseph was going to pipe up. I don't hear you, but.
Well, am I still on mute?
There you go.
We can hear you now, Joe.
Okay, well, I got disconnected trying to get unmuted. I disconnected, but I just got back on, so I didn't hear all the discussion. But in regards to this project, Joe, I'm very much in favor of it. But I'm a little bit apprehensive about the CE or the CE's. And I would like for you to check and see what happened on the Mendocino because they have recently proposed a large project with using CE's. And I don't know all the details. But anyway, it was challenged and the Department of Justice told them they couldn't defend them. So I'd hate to see you go down the line of, you know, getting all ready for a decision on a CE and finding it isn't going to work for you. So would you would you check and see that with, I don't know who, the Department of Justice, if you have a route to them? But, you know, don't go down the wrong trail because we're, I think everyone's in favor of this project. And I wouldn't want to see it get derailed.
No, I appreciate those. I, yeah, really what the CE is used for, if there's extraordinary circumstances, we would find ourselves doing something else, whether it's an EA or EIS. We don't want to do that. But we've we we tried to locate the project as much as we could into those areas where we don't have the extraordinary circumstances with significance. But I do not know what project that is on the Mendocino, but I can certainly find out. I appreciate you letting me know about it.
Okay, good luck with it.
Yeah. And and maybe Larry Glass. Larry, you might be familiar with that Mendocino project.
Yeah, there it is. Kind of apples and oranges. That was that was more of a salvage timber sale kind of a project anyway. But the issue, what SAFE totally supports what you're trying to do, Joe. I think the only thing that's given us a little indigestion is that the project is over four thousand acres. And typically, you don't see CE's get over three thousand acres. We're just worried about pushing that envelope, but we're not going to. We don't want to get in the way of the project, Captain. I think we're just trying to red flag you that some of the national groups, this might get on their radar when you start to propose something over three thousand acres as a CE.
Yeah, I I I am. I agree with you, Larry, that that it will attract some attention. I feel like the merit, just because it is four thousand acres, doesn't mean that it can't fit into a CE. But I think just by the mere mention of the forty-eight hundred acres, I can see what your point is. Anyway, well, I I appreciate those comments and, you know, we'll we'll still proceed forward the best we can.
Pat or Kelly, this is Judy. I would move to move forward to send the letter to the board, of course, taking in some of the concerns that was mentioned.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And and who is the second?
This is Susan Malino.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion?
For this vote, we thought that it might be easier than doing like the full roll call of twenty, you know, some odd people. That if there's anybody opposed to this, please speak up now. Otherwise, we'll assume we have your yes vote. Okay, so assuming that there was no opposition that passes unanimously?
Yeah, I think so. And Judy, Jeremy, I'll get a letter drafted into you. I got plenty of time these days at at home. So I'll try to get something to you actually by the end of today.
Okay, that's great. We don't have a meeting until April seventh.
April seventh?
Yeah.
Okay, so plenty of time. Maybe I'll wait wait a day.
Yeah, I think you can.
But I'll I'll get it to you. I want to get it done. Okay. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, everybody. Yeah. So the next thing that was on our agenda was kind of an update, hopefully from Ted and Scott on this new zone budgeting, but I don't know if they have joined us.
Pat, real quick.
Yeah.
Tom, Tom Waltz chatted in one comment that was to follow up with a comment that Joe had made during his his report. It had to do with the PUD seeking, you know, wider right-of-ways for the four hundred miles within the county.
Yeah.
I guess Joe had mentioned something about a fifty, you know, an increase from a twenty-foot width to a fifty-foot width. Actually, the PUD is keen to expand that out to a hundred and thirty feet of right-of-way.
That was my, yeah.
So he just.
And that is from.
With with a variable up and down slope width depending on tree height and risk to the lines. Aspen will be looking at potential effects within that footprint.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you.
And and one last little chat update. Sarah Icaridge had another COVID-related call that she had. So she had to hop off. She said she would be having any NRA updates following this call by email.
Okay. So, okay, great. So we we, as far as I know, we don't have Ted and Scott. Is that correct? What's that?
What's that, Bob?
This is Bob. Can I ask a question of Tom, please?
Sure.
Is there a prescription yet for that, Tom? Joseph and I went to the PD meeting and there was no prescription yet at that time? That's my question.
For the expanded right-of-way?
Correct.
Tom does not appear to be. He's on the he's on the video chat, but I don't see him in his in his little window.
Walked away when I asked my question. I won't take it personally.
Up there. Here he comes. He's there's just one moment.
So we're waiting for Tom?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I think he's trying to. I think he's trying to call in also.
Okay, so anyway. I don't know if the Forest Service folks who are on the call can, when we get done with Tom and Bob's discussion, can enlighten us at all on the budgeting issues, but if not, we'll just have to wait on that. So we're still waiting to see if for Tom to call in?
He's trying unsuccessfully. I can just I can just get him to call.
He's having trouble.
I can just give.
Okay.
Apparently Cousins is trying to weigh in and can't be heard.
He's giving me a thumbs up now. There is another question about from Jerry Cousins. It says, I have a question on NIPA.
Okay.
That it says, I'm not sure, Jerry, if I'm catching this correctly. It says that would be NIPA. I guess is that is there a NIPA for the the PUD right-of-way? Is that what you're asking, Jerry? He's typing furiously now.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me now? Okay, now, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we can hear Tom.
You can hear Tom.
Oh, I kind of got it. This is Tom in response to Bob's question about the PUD right-of-way and prescription. Right now, the contractor is just in the very beginning stages of collecting the information. So there has not been any prescriptions or definitions of what they want to do. They're just looking at where the sensitive areas that have to be, that would have to be surveyed, streams, crossings, those kinds of things. So they're just gathering that information and they're just saying, if we have a footprint that goes out to a hundred and thirty feet, what is the possible things we have to look for within that footprint? So no prescriptions or anything like that, just identifying where the footprint is and what a potential environmental impacts would be within that footprint.
So will there be a NIPA document done for this, Tom?
Definitely. The PVD is offered to the Forest Service to have the contractor work on the much of the environmental document so that the hopefully the Forest Service would have minimal personnel needed to be involved with doing that document. The contractors would do most of the the work for the environmental document.
It just seems like you'd need a prescription before you could do any NIPA work because it's different if you're only following specific categories versus clear-cutting it is are such different impacts. That's why I'm waiting to see prescription.
Yeah, and I think what they're saying initially is that, okay, let's look at the footprint, a hundred, up to a hundred and thirty feet on either side. And and once you've identified the areas that you're going to have to look, you're just trying to see how big a project it could be.
Tom, this is Joseph. I think you just doubled what Paul told us at the meeting. He was talking about a hundred and thirty-five feet total managed area. You just said a hundred and thirty-five feet each side of the line is, which is correct.
I I if I stated that, that was incorrect. It's a total of a hundred and thirty. And it could be like eighty feet on the uphill side and fifty feet on the downhill side. But no, a hundred and thirty total. Sorry, Joseph.
So would that would that be cleared area or just managed area?
Managed area. We don't know what's the miss, the treatments that Bob's asking about haven't even been looked at or identified or anything. They're just saying, can we get the right-of-way within this footprint? And what are the environmental resources that have to be looked at within that right-of-way?
Okay, well, if you'd keep us posted on how that's developing.
Terry, she has a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Terry.
Hey, I'd like to add it to that CEPA. And our thing is a water tanks for, you know, the towns. Weaverville could use another tank up on top of Oregon Summit and one on Brown's Mountain and up east Weaver Creek. And, you know, with the thinking of like the right-of-way, putting sprinkler systems down there, things down with big tall sprinkler heads that could be activated if a fire was in there, sensors or whatever, at least in NIPA. So if we have the money over time, tanks are pretty expensive.
So.
Thank you.
I'm gonna. Thank you, Terry. So maybe that's a future agenda item, Tom, you know, for the for Paul and the staff, you know, to give us a an update on that. There was a discussion probably a year, eighteen months ago that Paul led over, I think, in a meeting in Hayford. So I think it's a certainly a future topic. So back to the zone budgeting. So Joe and or Krista, Nancy and you all feel comfortable? Who is that? Is there anybody who wants to take a stab at that? Are we going to pass that off to our next meeting?
Is Scott or Ted on, Pat? Can you tell?
I have. I I I don't. I don't know. But Kelly, do you see Todd or Ted or Scott on at all?
I don't think that they are right now.
Okay, so maybe that's a future. We're just going to have to pass on that then.
I I can say a few things.
Okay, why don't you? Yeah.
Yeah. So the budgeting this year for fiscal year twenty, we are sharing with the North Zone, and that is the Chastity Trinity, Six Rivers, the Mendocino, the Clamath, the MODOC, and the Last, and I think that's six. So the only thing that we're sharing budget-wise is cost pool. And we're we're having a reasonable amount of success with that. You would think that when you share a pot of money, you know, there's going to be, you know, a grab. Hey, how come I don't have this and you have this? You're not producing as much. Those types of things can happen. But this year, just with cost pool, it's one of our BLIs. It's the money that we use for. Those types of things can happen, but uh, this year, uh, just with cost pool, it's one of our BLIs, it's the money that we use for uh, the ranger salary, the front desk, and some of the supplies that keep uh, uh, stocked here in our offices, such as ink and copiers and that sort of thing. But next year, fiscal year twenty-one, starting October first, the entire budget, um, our fixed costs and our discretionary costs, all of these will be shared with the zone. And so um, at this point in time, I do not think that the mechanisms are in place quite yet, however, they have been working on them. They are not in place as to how allocations will work. Um, the four supervisors do get together uh, on a monthly basis and decide um, on who's gonna be hired. Um, that is happening now, but in terms of hard money, where the money goes, they're still figuring out procedurally on how that's gonna work next year. Um, the challenges are, you know, the money's gonna go where, the uh, fuels acres treated, and timber volume is going to be. Um, the Chastity Trinity is, is probably the, the largest infrastructure wise um, within the six forest zones. So we have a pretty good sized budget. It's those smaller forests such as the MODOC, um, you know, how, how are they gonna be made whole and uh, in all this effort? So um, the North Zone uh, District Rangers are gonna be getting together, well, we were, until uh, all this uh, COVID nineteen stuff hit. We were gonna get together uh, on April eighth, and just get to know each other, because there's a lot of new District Rangers. But how are we gonna share resources across our forest zones, uh, I'm sorry, our forest boundaries? So um, not just the forest supervisors are gonna get together, we as Rangers will start convening and helmaking, helping each other out. Not to circumvent any other process, we just feel like we need to know what the needs are and at least know who the ranger is. And so uh, a lot of sharing is gonna take place, uh, human resource capital. Um, uh, burning is, I know between the Klamath and Six Rivers, that's going on. Um, we've been assisting the Six Rivers in, in several areas as well. Uh, so it's gonna be a new venture, you know, it's gonna be a little bit of an uncharted territory in terms of the entire budget being shared. Um, but I, I do think, um, I have confidence that the four supervisors are making the headway. Um, that's, that's kind of what I know right now to, um, from my ranger's perspective.
Well, thanks, Joe, anybody, any thoughts, comments to bring up at this point?
I'm, I'm just-
I'll say this, say this, Pat.
Since the four supervisors don't make it to the meetings anymore, maybe it would be good if we got written reports from them about how this is all gonna work?
That's-
And I have another, I have a question also, I wonder, you know, the grant money that's coming in to work on these two forests, uh, through Watershed Center, RCD, Two Chiefs, all that, is that gonna count against us in terms of competition for the pot of money in the zone?
I, I've got an answer for you on that, I, I, I don't, I don't see that, Joseph, but what I do see in going forward, you raise an excellent point, that I think since the, the boundaries between forests are not so black and white anymore, they're gray, what I do see is more sharing of information, so in some of these grant proposals, I do see uh, rangers getting together. Um, not so much the four supervisors, but the rangers getting together and making a joint um, grant proposal. So where we truly do not compete with each other, rather than, rather than do that, we're, we're, we're making a, a more of a, of a, um, how do I say it? More of a, um, it might be a little more of a complex um, proposal, but you know, we're gonna be smart about it. Um, I, I think there's some certain logistics that we'll have to overcome, but I do see more upside to this. I may see it in competitive uh, scenario, especially when forests are getting together uh, and joining forces and proposing this grant uh, proposal stuff. I, I, I think we'll be a better place, certainly more competitive, and I think it's gonna drop the barriers between the forests down a little bit, where we are truly working with each other.
Okay, good, good comments, anybody else? No? So I have, I have, I have a, go ahead.
Yeah, one, one thing before we move on. Um, uh, Jerry's still having issues with his audio for some reason, and um, I'm showing, it looks like a bandwidth issue possibly, but um, he chatted to me over a question, what, that I think goes back to Nick, and Nick possibly, you could speak more to this. Uh, and Joe, Joe had commented on uh, the potential for third-party NEPA, and I believe that uh, what Jerry's trying to ask is, he was wondering about what was happening with local NEPA resource development, and I assume that he was just wanting a report out about um, uh, you know, the, that potential, and being that you guys are starting out with Bowerman Ridge, maybe Nick, you could talk to that point? Nick, are you on the call?
Doesn't sound like he is.
Okay, um, I, I guess I can, I can speak to that briefly, but not to the extent that Nick would have. Uh, as, as I mentioned, uh, with the Bowerman Ridge project, and, and Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like uh, you guys are moving forward with uh, an, an agreement that would allow the Watershed Center to contract with you to do third-party NEPA on that particular project. And um, Nick and I have had a discussion about shared resources. Says from Nick, I can hear you all, but apparently my unmuting is not working, apologies. Um, my understanding is that, that uh, Nick is, is a, a pretty much everybody on board that he needs to move forward with that. So as far as the resources and the, and the capacity, he's pretty much got that, there's a few um, ologists that he would be looking for, and, and the RCD is uh, looking to basically backfill those particular, um, those particular positions. So um, I, I think the short answer is that uh, between the two organizations, uh, we're, we're moving forward with this concept that we had been talking about for the past year. Um, and we are pretty close to, uh, and we're very confident in our ability to, to, to do that. So um, does that pretty much get what you were at, looking for, Jerry? I'm looking for a nod.
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you hear me?
I actually can hear you.
Wow, okay, very good. It still says connected to audio, but if you can hear me, that's nice.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so, Jerry, you had asked another question, follow-up, and said you thought that PUD was going to work with local NEPA processes too, but it, uh, maybe that's something that Tom can answer. Uh, if they're, if this, is that Aspen company basically handling the uh, NEPA for, or is that, are they working with agencies? I, I understand that they're working more directly with, and starting with the, on that project for the right of ways, um, on the, the, the power lines, they were gonna start with the power lines that are coming into the county on the east side, uh, and working with the BLM more directly on that. I don't know much more than that personally.
Yeah, I, I think that's exactly the way it's set up, is that they're the, the, they're, the contractor is working with the agencies to identify uh, all the uh, resources and the things to analyze and stuff, but they're going to be the, what, what you would say the uh, agency lead is going to be the PUD rather than the Forest Service on the project, I guess? Is that the best way to say it?
That's correct, Tom. Um, I, I did go to the TPUD right-of-way uh, conference down in Reading, two months, I wasn't able to make the last one, but uh, that is correct. Our, our specialists, and, and sorry for the missed quote on the right-of-way widths, I, I knew, I didn't have it in front of me, I shouldn't have even tried, right? But um, our, our specialist will be involved, they're not expecting us to be involved till the end of May. Um, I, I'm talking about a face-to-face, but uh, before that, we will be getting them shape files and information, any extraordinary features on the ground within the shapes or within the proposed right-of-way areas, that type of thing. But make no mistake, A- Aspen Environmental, um, that firm is very good in what they do, we have a good track record with them, and uh, we expect some good things. And going back, if I may, um, we do not have, I did not, in the meeting that I did go to, um, we did not have a vegetation prescription, removal prescription, whether it's small material or a large sawlog material, I did not see that. So um, I think that will be forthcoming here, hopefully, pretty soon.
Okay, and, and just one thing to follow up on the, the Bowerman Ridge uh, NEPA. Uh, Nick wrote, uh, that he basically said that what, you know, my statement was generally accurate, and the only thing that we would probably need to sub out would be archaeology at this point. And we've talked about potentially who we might have do that, but that's not decided yet.
Cool, okay. So um, last thing on our agenda, I don't know that we have a lot of um, folk on to talk to are the Cannabis Committee and the Recreation Committee. I think um, Sarah said she was gonna send us a written report from the NRA, but how about the Cannabis Committee? Susan, that's kind of your lead, is there anything there?
No, um, I, it was confirmed that Sheriff Saxon didn't know about getting on the call today, but he wasn't sure, I don't have confirmation that he will be on it, and apparently he has not, um, not tried to get on, so I don't have any information.
Okay.
Hey, Pat, um, I just wanted to pass along to everybody that, uh, working with the group CROP, and Judy's uh, Boris is on that uh, advisory board with me, that we have uh, been being successful apparently at starting to get the attention of the national, of, you know, Congress, basically. And there may be some funding coming down to help with remediation and possibly prevention of some of these growth sites. So we'll keep our fingers crossed to see if that uh, makes it into the, the budget, and, and it would be more federal offices, federal land, and it would be money for cleanups as well.
Okay, well, great, Larry. Okay.
One other thing, I just wanted to mention, uh, I wanted to, uh, it looks like Chris Losi is now on the call, welcome, Chris.
Hi.
Okay.
Do I have voice?
You do, I hear you.
Great, I don't have video, but I have voice.
Okay, so how about on the recreation side, is there anything um, from Recreation Committee members that they want to bring up at this time? Um, we've already talked about the, and got a motion approved on the letter for the Community Forest Fuels and Trails. Um, Kelly, Carol, Susan Ross, anything you wanna throw in at this point?
Yeah, uh, I think Joe gave our whole report, we are all for that uh, Weaver Basin Trail project. And uh, it's, it sounds like it's in, you know, but a lot of them are existing trails, and I think there's only six miles or so I could be wrong of, of new trail to rebuild. So the rest of it just connects existing trails, it sounds uh, bigger than it is, it, it's a big area to do the archaeology and mining stuff for, but uh, and, and it, and it goes to one more thing, it's making this a trail user, discounting a trail user uh, destination, you know, be it runners, bikers, hikers, wildflower pickers, or whatever, you know, they uh, um, that's, that's our deal.
Uh, Carol, Carol uh, had requested, so we had, we had our committee, uh, you know, Recreation Committee meeting last Friday, and a few days before that, we had a, a, a more intimate meeting with uh, Sarah Acreage about a, a couple of specific issues. Um, but um, Carol was particularly interested in about, a report out about Minersville, um, and the Minersville Boat Ramp specifically. Um, the Minersville Boat Ramp Project, which is, I believe, I, I remember, recall something like a four-point-six-million-dollar um, project, which includes a parking area uh, above the waterline, and then a, a very long um, low-water uh, boat ramp uh, to be put in, was engineered by the Department of Boating and Waterways. Um, and um, apparently, uh, when that design uh, went to the um, forest, uh, Sarah reported out that the, uh, the engineers on the forest side didn't particularly care for the design of the actual parking area, which doesn't have uh, you know, their standard, like if you go to Clark Springs, there's, there's, you know, double pull-through um, parking spaces to, you know, accommodate, uh, you know, like a truck and a trailer. Um, this particular design did not include that, which would have, you know, would have uh, made for a need to have uh, users backing into parking areas. And uh, the engineers at the forest were not particularly excited about that design, and so it's uh, somewhat stalled out. There's uh, potentially gonna be an, an ask for an extension of the, of the project, because my understanding is that the funding uh, would go away for a second time, I believe, next year. But if they can't get, you know, things started this year, you know, we're expecting that there's gonna be a low-water year and that there will actually be the potential for, um, you know, good potential for actually getting the ramp itself built. If they can't move forward because the parking areas are stymie on it, then um, there's, you know, that would be the second time that we would potentially be losing funding for this particular ramp. And so um, there, Kelly Gant, who happened to be at the meeting on uh, Wednesday, the March eleventh, said that she would try to reach out to the people that she knows at um, the Department of Boating and Waterway, and, and try to facilitate with Sarah, uh, a meeting of the engineers, so that potentially there would be some, you know, they could reach some agreement as to how to proceed with that project, so that that funding doesn't dry up and go away. Does that sound about right to you, uh, Pat?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty much it, and, and um, the forest engineers felt that the parking design was a bit of a safety issue, and so it kind of puts Sarah as the line officer in a, in a bit of a box until they can res- resolve that one way or the other. Um, and um, and yeah, and Kelly's gonna kind of take the lead on facilitating initially, I think, a conversation between Sarah and um, the DBOW Engineers Supervisor, and then kind of go from there. Any, any questions on that? Kelly, anything else you-
I was gonna say, Kelly and you, Pat, described that really well, the way I understand it.
Okay. So um, uh, Kelly, or Carol, Ross, Susan, anything else on the Recreation Committee?
Uh, yeah, we talked about uh, houseboats, a number of houseboats on the lake, and uh, there's ninety-nine uh, private houseboats, and, and how many of, uh, how many are owned by the commercial, or it's like thirty or something? And their uh, commercial can go up to like a hundred and twenty, but, but we're limited to what we have now, and so there's a lot of houseboats that are, aren't on the lake. So if they switch those numbers and uh, or have a total, you know, we can have more houseboats on the lake. And uh, it, it was brought up that they w- would pay a slip fee, you know, they would uh, buy fuel there, they would also buy beer, you know, which would just minimize- They would also buy beer, you know, which would just minimize the slip fee and everything for the amount of beer that they drink. And the fact that when they come up for a week and, uh, uh, whether they're coming from Eureka or from Humboldt County or what, or the city, uh, they'll go to the movies one night or they'll go to out to dinner or they'll do other things. They spend a lot of money up here. They could easily, uh, spend a hundred dollars a day just in ski boat fuel. You know, there's always a houseboat and they also rent a slip for their, uh, ski boat and, uh, so we, we don't know what we're going to get to happen about that, but we're looking.
Yeah.
Houseboats on the lake.
So I can, I can expand on that conversation. This, the, the bulk of this conversation happened at the recreation committee meeting that, uh, we really started this. Sarah introduced herself after only being on the job for about three weeks at the rec committee meeting that we had in January on the 10th. And we set up the meeting with her directly to talk about messaging on this particular issue. And, and the issue, as I understand it, has to do with the fact that, um, uh, according to the management plan for the national recreation area within the Shasta Trinity National Forest, which includes both Trinity and Shasta lakes. On the Trinity side, there is a total allotment of 222 potential houseboats that, you know, they, they did a environmental analysis back in 1986 and said that this, you know, was the maximum that could be held by this particular reservoir. They, at that time allotted 120 houseboats, as, um, Ross mentioned, to the commercial side of things. And then 102 to the private side. The issue is twofold. One is that, uh, on the private side, there was a technical addendum that was added to the management plan, uh, somewhere around, I want to say 2014, that basically stated that, um, if any aging or, you know, any houseboat on the private side gets pulled out, that that permit then become defunct. There's no longer, it, it could no longer be sold or traded or, or assigned to a, a different boat. In that time, three have been lost, so, uh, due to that particular technical, um, uh, decision. And so we're down to 99 private, um, uh, houseboats, of which every single one of those permits has a, has a, as a, as a boat on the lake. And so the, the marinas make more money from slip fees, um, and the permitting process, uh, you know, the permitting that goes to, so there's slip fees for actually mooring the, the boats in the lake. And then there's the permitting fees that are paid, uh, by the, the, the owner. And all that per, all that money, um, or, or, well, nearly a hundred percent of that, that money for the permitting comes back to the NRA for, you know, doing administration and, and management of the, um, this particular opportunity on, on the lake. One thing to note is that of all the, all the, for, all the lakes that basically are, are, um, on Forest Service ground throughout the whole country, the Shasta Trinity has the unique distinction of being the only one that actually manages those permits, you know, internally. Um, every other forest that has a lake on it, um, basically has, uh, some external third party, uh, organization or company that basically manages the permitting of, of houseboats on the lake. So, um, so it's, so part of the issue has to do with the loss of the private permits as, by attrition, as, as, as boats are being pulled out. There, there, we're losing those particular permits. And then the other part of it has to do with the fact that judging by, uh, some numbers that have been thrown out, there's, there may not even be 20 commercial houseboats on the lake currently at the, you know, the, the, the two, you know, marinas that we have that are actually, um, functioning. And so, um, so that leaves, you know, essentially a hundred free, you know, commercial permits that are not being utilized, um, and will probably not be utilized because, you know, renting houseboats is not lucrative. It's, it's the sale, as Ross mentioned, of gas and beer and, you know, the, the, the amenities that, you know, that are, you know, more, um, utilized by the, the people that come up to, to use the lake than, than the actual rental of the houseboats and the, the rental and upkeep of the houseboats. So the conversation had to do with the fact that there was, um, a desire to actually have more private permits on the lake than we currently have and that there is a demand for them. Uh, there's, yeah, Kelly Gant mentioned that there was a number of, of people that she knew specifically that have houseboats over on the, on the Shasta Lake side that would, would, would much rather have their boats on, on the Trinity Lake, but can't because there aren't permits. You know, they can do day use, but that means they have to pull the things out, you know, you know, put them in, put them and pull them out each day, which is just, you know, and then more of them and all that kind of stuff elsewhere. So, so the conversation with Sarah had to do with what, you know, what we needed to do in order to basically propose, um, a change in that technical decision uh, and, and in order to sort of shift some of the commercial to private and what that, and what that mechanism actually is to, in order to, to do that. She had some legwork to do and she had to do some research to figure out what, um, what we could do, but, you know, meanwhile, Jared Huffman ended up, uh, a, a letter to the chief of the USDA about this particular issue. And the response seemed to indicate from the chief that this was a local decision that could be made, um, at the supervisor's office. And so, um, part of that meeting had to do with what was the information that we had? How could we approach Scott Russell with this? And, and what was the mechanism for actually creating another technical, you know, uh, non-publicly, I guess, reviewed, uh, decision that could sort of reverse that, um, that loss by attrition of the, of the private permitting? And, um, and, and whether there was a way that we could shift the numbers from commercial to private in order to accommodate more privately owned, uh, houseboats on the lake. Pat, does that sum it up for you?
Yeah, I think that sums it up. Okay, any, any?
So Sarah's currently working towards that goal of how we approach Scott with a, um, you know, an appropriate plan, uh, to move, you know, forward with and suggestions on, on, on what we, you know, are wanting to do in that regard.
Right, okay. I think that, yeah, I think that covers it. Um, so we're, we're closing in on our 12 o'clock hour. So we didn't have any non-member public, so I don't know that there's any more public input. And the main thing that I would like to use for the last few minutes is we've had a couple of suggestions uh, for agenda items for our next meeting, so this time for some agenda building. So other topics, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's just one more rec related question that Carol put in and.
Okay.
This might be something that Joe could speak to. Uh, it had to do with, um, Minersville and all, and other campgrounds are open all year round. Will they be closing, I guess, is the question?
Maybe under the.
Yeah, this is Joe Smale speaking. Yes, they are closing, starting closing today.
Okay, and then.
Don't know for how long, but right now that's, that's what our direction is. And it's appropriate, I think.
Tom Walsh also asked a question about, I don't mean to be jumping around, but I'm just kind of picking this up.
Yeah, no, that's.
Carol, Carol mentioned that the state parks had, were, were closing their campgrounds. And so it sounds like the Forest Service will be following suit.
Yes, indeed.
Okay. And then Tom had a question about the houseboats and the possibility of increasing the use. Does anyone know if the houseboats can be converted to electric rather than gas powered motors? And that, that I don't know about. Anybody have any idea about that?
Not a clue.
Anything's possible.
There, there is a lot of, uh, down in the, uh, Long Beach and, um, Los Angeles, there are a lot of, uh, boats that, that are electric now. It possibly can, can do it.
Okay.
Or you could go to steam maybe and then pick up all the driftwood that's on the lake.
Deal with the biomass issue, yeah.
Yeah, but there is, there are electric boats.
Okay, cool.
I think that the, the general issue isn't really, we're, we're, we're not really questioning the, the, the total number. We're, we're just wanting to be able to figure out whether we can potentially, you know, recommend that there be a shift up from commercial to the private, which seems to have more demand at this point than the commercial side.
I'd, I'd like to reiterate that this is a serious, uh, tourist money here. You know, this is not a hiker, you know, buying a hamburger on his way out or something. This is somebody that, that's spending thousands of dollars, maybe $6,000 in a week, you know. So it's, I like tourists with money, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, um, potential agenda items for the next meeting? Anybody? We've, we've gotten from Larry Glass and Joseph, you know, kind of a, a paired issue that, that I've already written down, but anything else?
We had talked about potentially pushing back the report out for the Oak Woodlands restoration. You know, if we were to get to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Presentation on that. Anything else from the group?
Hello, this is Diana Sheen.
Yeah, Diana.
Yes, thank you. As usual, I'm just worried about wildfires. So maybe that, something like that, more detail should be put on the, uh, next agenda. I did read through all of Joe's information and stuff. So.
So an update on kind of.
The retardant plane that took off from the airport yesterday. I, Terry saw it.
Come on, they can't fly out of there.
So an update on fire season?
Well, wildfires and whether they're going to change the policy to putting them out and, and also, you know, the continuation of, of, uh, Garden Goldsch and Cindy Goldsch and all that stuff. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, just FYI, that was a smoke jumper plane that was, uh, it looked like they were doing some test flights on our airport, some training flights, maybe.
Oh, that's, that's a good thing. There is a next smo- uh, smoke jumper.
So any.
Thank you.
Any other, you're welcome, any other agenda item, ideas?
I was going to say, uh, just real quick in response to that question, Pat, that, uh, even though we've, we've had a pretty good storm, have another good storm coming in Monday and Tuesday, it appears that this is a lower than average precip year. And so, uh, we are very well aware of that and, uh, we, our readiness will be, um, probably enhanced. Um, I, I would say a little bit earlier, maybe in, uh, the end of April and May. We do have temps coming on next pay period, uh, firefighter temp, that is, or temporary employees. So, uh, we'll be gearing up, but we are anticipating, um, an earlier fire season as opposed to last year.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, any, anything else, anything else for the good of the order, so to speak?
One, one more thing, Pat, sorry to come in again like this.
Yeah, it's okay.
What's doing, can't make up his mind. We do have, uh, two engines, um, they are fully staffed. One here in Weaverville, one down, down Canyon, uh, 299 corridor. So, uh, we can respond, um, it's a one hour delay response, but they're fully staffed. And, uh, for the conditions that we're in, we feel like that's.
Okay, good. Well, folks, um, thanks for your patience on, on doing this, um, virtual kind of meeting. It worked out pretty good. Thank you to Kelly for being the, running the system and keeping things going and tech, checking the chat, um, boxes and all that sort of thing. So thinking optimistically, you know, our next meeting would be, uh, the third, will be the third Friday in May, which would be May 15th. And let's hope that we're in a situation where we can actually meet. But if not, we've kind of gotten a little experience under our belt doing it this way. So anything else for anybody?
Appreciate the setup for the Zoom meeting. I, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was okay.
Yeah, okay. Well, that been, um, everybody, go ahead.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Everybody enjoy the sunny afternoon on a walk by yourself.
Right.
And you too.
You're outdoors.
Okay, okay. You there, Kelly, still?
I am.
Yeah, it went well.
Yeah, I think it, overall, not too bad, especially considering it's the first time I ran the, the interface, but.
And you had, you did it from, and you did it from home, right?
I did it from home, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Um, so I think I got pretty good notes, so I'll be, I'll, I'll do up the collective memory.
Okay, I have, um, that sounds good. I mean, it was short and everything. I, I went ahead and recorded it.
Oh, okay.
So I, we, if we need to, you know, if there's anything we specifically want to review, we can, we can go back and, and check on the recording, which will be interesting to see how that worked out too. Because I, they gave me the option of recording it locally to my computer and also to the, um, to the cloud. So I just went ahead and did it on the cloud. So.
Okay.
Again, this is all fairly new and I, and according to Amelia, she thought that it was, uh, just part of the service that we have, uh, with the Go version that we are, are subscribed to now, so. We should, you know, definitely look into that if there's any, any, if you, you know, come against anything and need a little refresher, then we could sit down.
Okay. So do you know, um, is there a time limit on how long it's up on the cloud?
That I don't know. I'll, I'll, uh, when I get out of the.
Some services, yeah, some services have kind of a 30.
Yeah, it's got its own little window, so, um, I can go back into the actual, uh, web interface with the website.
Okay.
See if there's anything like that that tells me if there's a, a limitation on time.
Okay, cool. Okay, well, yeah.
Worked out pretty good, I think.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll knock together, I, I actually already drafted the letter for the board of supervisors, so.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just spiff it up a little bit, you know, to somehow.